Good evening, it's 7 o'clock, so we're gonna get rolling. I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. Please stand and join me for the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand is, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
I just have a question.
I think, believe there will be at least three. Four. Four, we had four bids.
So we have good participation there? Moved to approve. Second?
Second.
Moved and approved, or moved and seconded for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and one thing I wanted, one person I wanted to recognize real quickly on the consent agenda is our Assistant Superintendent Eric Swenson is turning, is resigning from his position here. He accepted a position as a Woodburn High School Principal. So Eric, thank you for your, the years you've been. And to go a little further with that, we've had a fair amount of resignations and retirements this year from a lot of people who have been here for a long time and some are retiring, some are moving on for different opportunities. And I would just like to publicly, I'm not gonna list all the, list all the names, but I would just like to publicly thank them for their, for all their years of service to this school district. They're, they're people who are gonna be missed and I'd just like to publicly thank, thank all of them for their years of service. So let's give them a hand. Okay, at this time I'd like to open our budget hearing. This is our, our, um, the approval of our, our budget for next year is an action item tonight. So this is our final hearing on the budget. Our final chance for anyone in the audience who wants to make comments about the budget. So we're gonna move to audience with visitors now for only budget-related items. Would anybody like to address the board? Okay, if something comes to your mind, you'll have a chance later on. Student reps, I know Macy Mohollan graduated, so she's not here. Acacia just came up and had to leave for work. We have two new student reps for next year. One is Courtney Roth and she had another, something else going on tonight. And Elijah Nielsen isn't here, so Mr. Hannan's gonna do the, the student rep.
Apparently, I am the student rep this evening. So I just, I just got this handed to me, so bear with me for a minute. Cheer team just held tryouts for the fall of 2014. Dance team also just held tryouts for next school year. Softball apparently has their awards banquet tonight. They had an awesome season. They actually won their play-in game and lost a close game to Liberty in the round of 16. Baseball improved a great deal over the course of the season. Started out slow and actually swept Lebanon in their last three games and kept Lebanon out of the playoffs, which was bad for Lebanon, but good for us. So Matthew Willis won the shot put at the state track meet. Cheyenne Paltrow won second at state and Mathis Kinsey got sixth in the 300-meter hurdles. Jarrett Baker got seventh in the javelin. ASB just finished up spring week, had a great week. Weather was awesome, kids did a great job. Just Powderpuff Talent Show and Spirit Games all took place and were a huge success. Sophomore class won the Powderpuff Game. Let's see, we followed that with the talent show. We did something a little different this year and split up the evening events and tried to spread it out more over the week rather than just have a bunch of events on one or two, two days and it really, really was successful. Audrey Groom placed first with her performance and following the talent show was the Spirit Games. They had an obstacle course, balloon volleyball, chariot races, class dances. The juniors beat the seniors by one point to win the new Spirit Cup. If you get a chance, you'll have to swing by my office. We've got this huge, brand-new Spirit Cup donated and created by Johnny Farrows husband. Pretty cool. ASB is now starting to plan homecoming, believe it or not, for next school year, which is the third week of the school year. So we hit the ground running again once September gets here. Key Club is working on electing positions for next week and planning more community service events. FBLA, a few members are getting ready to go to Nashville for Nationals. They'll be there from June 28th to July 3rd. They just had a lock-in team bonding night at the high school, where they stayed the night at the high school. Kind of a fun event and, um, let's see. Auto Club just held their car show, had a very good turnout. They had 107 cars and they made about $3,000. Yeah, it was a huge success. Construction Club's working on building sheds to sell as individual projects. Choir and Band just had their last concert of the year. They did an amazing job. And Speech is working on who wants to participate on the Speech Team next year. That's it. It's Overton High School. One more week.
Any questions for Mr. Hannan? Thank you, very good report. For Off the Cup. One thing with, he mentioned homecoming, you know, being very early in the year. I was at a graduation the other night where Therese Skirletz gave the spoke and she told the eighth graders, she said, "I will see you at the high school in 92 days." And not to depress the staff out there, but it's hard to believe that we're already under 90 days till the start of next school year.
Wow.
Sorry about that. Okay, I'd like to open it up to our audience with visitors for any discussion items. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Please sign in and state your name and sign in your name and address and state your name for everyone to hear.
An address too?
Address also.
I'm Suella Nida and I live at 407 Silver Street in Silverton, Oregon.
And Suella, before you get started, I forgot my little paper tonight, but we do like to limit our audience with visitors. If people could keep their comments to five minutes or under, so everyone has a chance to speak.
I'm a pretty quick speaker. I think we'll be fine.
Thank you.
So I think it's customary to tell a little bit about yourself. I know you all know I'm the nurse consultant for the school district. But I also serve on the Willamette Valley Community Health, Community Advisory Council. Been doing that since the beginning of the council. That's for the Medicaid, Medicare people in Marion County, Willamette Valley. I also am on the EMAC Committee for Emergency Management for the Silverton area. I was the school representative for Marion County Health Department's Accreditation Review. I work on the Silver Falls School District Wellness Committee and I also attend regular service coordinator meetings. So I do keep busy and I just kinda wanted to give you that. I think that's customary anyways. So I wanna talk about Eugene Field tonight because when I first started working there, I felt it was the happiest place on earth, next to Disneyland. I still feel that way. But it's the students that have that happy attitude all the time. They're five-to-nine-year-olds and they're not looking at the buildings and the surrounding property. They're enth- they're looking at the enthused adults, the friends, the playground, the balls, and the proverbial squirrels. So it is the happiest place on earth. But what I see are things like having to come and go on a regular basis to and from the school. The crosswalks are a huge issue. I just today was, I pointed up at the sign of the school and I went like this, which I do frequently to let people know it's a school zone, please slow down. Never mind that I'm in the crosswalk and, and actually waiting for them to stop. This particular time, the other guy stopped in the crosswalk. I was like, "Oh, he stopped. I wasn't expecting him to do that." And I said, "I just wanted to point out to you that the sign, this is a school zone and you were going a little fast." Very nice and apologetic was great, but for the most part, they're just driving straight ahead, don't see anything. So cars are going by the school on a regular basis all day long without paying attention to those crosswalks. Then, um, the, let's see what else about the crosswalks I can tell you. I don't know. It's just all day long. The open windows and the dead of the window, winter, that's another thing I see, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. There's something about air quality inside, outside, whether it's good or bad, but when you have the windows open one way or another, it's still poor air quiet quality. There are no idling signs at the sides of the building. Now, I don't even know how to spell idling. I had a hard time writing it down here because I thought, "Why do we have such a sign and why is it on the side of a building that has small children in it?" So those signs truly do exist because the air quality needs to stay good there. That's not okay. We have blacktop and bark chips for our playground in the center of the Garden City. We have octopus electrical cords in the classrooms. What also I see is lights out in the wintertime due to power usages. We end up having, all of a sudden, the lights go out and everybody goes, "Oh, the power just went out again." So these are things that are real things that I see while I work at this school. The other thing is that we are with the five-to-nine-year-old group, and I don't mean this in any kind of poor way. They're little germ machines. They like, they have a lot of germs and they like to share them a lot. And this is the time where we really need to spend time teaching them how to properly take care of those things. So what we have for them is we have sinks that require multiple handlings because they don't shut off. Frequently, I know I go down the hallway and shut the sink off. I use a paper towel. I don't know that everybody does. But why are we having to do this with our children? They're, they're confused. They're trying to turn off the water, so they're spending extra time with their hands on these sinks. I've heard of sinks that aren't working when the toilets are flushing. I haven't actually gone to look at that. And then we have our Functional Skills Class, which I'm gonna talk a little bit more about, that has a diaper-changing area without a sink in that area or anywhere in that room. It's down the hallway. People are using hand sanitizer till they get to the bathroom. That's what we have to offer at this time. We're hoping to change that at least even during this interim time. But what I'm also noticing, how much time I've been doing it, okay, in time?
Okay, a couple minutes.
Functional Skills Classrooms, we have a Functional Skill Set. I think I mentioned that the last time I was here, that we have kids that have really high needs now and that those kids have extra equipment. They have walkers, they have standers, they have wheelchairs, they have all these different things that need to be part of their daily support. We are storing them right now underneath the staircase, which is not anywhere near the classroom. We have children that need it really quiet and others that need that constant, "You're doing a great job, you're doing a great job." They potentially could use two classrooms. You'll never see that happening at this school, just because of the size of it. And then when I do hearing screens in the fall, where when I've done them, the, we've been borrowing the Silverton Inn and Suites, little area that they have for the dining area, because it's so noisy all throughout the school, we haven't been able to find a good place. Silverton Inn and Suites was wonderful to let us use that space. They have now since put a restaurant in there. This last winter, we used the Music Mobile. And it was right next to the playground and the fans were noisy. So it really alters how quickly we can get through these tests and how, how the results come with those. I wanna talk about, real quickly, with the EMAC Committee that I'm on, we've talked about floods and the dam breaking and I know nobody wants to ever discuss that, but we have a plan of run. Well, if you're talking to tell kids to run for the hills, there's a highway with cars trying to get out at that same time. It's just not, we don't have a plan, is basically what I'm saying. Fire plan, I think Jennifer and the staff have done a marvelous job of making sure the kids get out of the building in a really quick and good fashion, so I do wanna comment that I think that that's really great. And I just have one other comment about the building, the frozen ice patch that forms each year right in front of the front doors when it's icy, which we aren't usually supposed to be at school, but I've been there when it's been that way. We have that diaper that's over the front of the school, is the best I can call it. I don't know that that is, every time I go in and out of that building, I think that thing is leaking. It's putting ice here, which isn't safe, but how safe is this diaper that I'm walking underneath every single day? So there are just these issues that I feel like we have kind of gone off-track. It sounds a little bit too not really focused on getting Eugene Field as our absolute priority, but I think that we have five-to-nine-year-olds that are needing a safe place, 500 of them, and I think we need to stop idling. We need to just move on. And I know you guys are really working on that, but I do want to just reiterate that. I got my five minutes in?
Yeah, thank you, Suella. Any questions? Okay, anyone else? Jean? Oh, sir, go ahead. I thought she was on her way. Sorry, Jean.
Hi, Tim.
Hi, Jean.
You know, I think the speech we just listened to was a good one, 'cause she was offering solutions. And I think that's what we need to look at. We're always hearing the problems, but we're not, we're not solving them. And she's talking about some things that I, I think about all the time. So I was gonna talk about several things, but I think I'll focus on Eugene Field. The, I have a, I started writing an email to all of you that I didn't have time. I've been busy all weekend on something else. So, but I will send it to you. And that was an email that I sent to the principal at Eugene Field School where I described the problem is not, for health issues, not coming from the building and the problem is coming from people or children that are bringing the germs in and it's an enclosed environment. So I want you to visualize the condition like a commercial airliner. And we've had lots of discussions about people close in and that the, they change the condition so that there's more ventilation, more air changes of this type of nature. So really, when we talk about, and she, and the gal just mentioned it, if we have windows open to create this ventilation, we have another problem that we're, I believe most of the problems that we have there health-wise are between November and February. Well, those are cold months, so we're gonna have a tendency, out of human nature, just to shut the windows down or close them more at that time period. And it really doesn't circulate through the whole room. It's just bringing some air in. We need a system that really circulates the air, takes it to filters and this kind of thing. So we keep looking at Eugene Field as it's a huge problem. The proposal that Dalky Construction bought into and reviewed is like a new building. It's with a 10,000-square-foot new addition to it. It's something that would last and take care of us for another 50 years. We have the thing that's been brought on recently by the architect out of Oregon City where he emphasizes how, how big the piece of property is. Well, we haven't even utilized about a half acre of it where the dogs have been pooping. We're not using it. The kids, my grandkids tell me, we can't, they won't even let us go over there. So we need to look at it. What do we have? We have also available is another two tenths of an acre on the corner. That could be another parking lot, so we don't have to have all the people that have been parking out in the street to let kids off. So there's really, there's things that we can take care of and make things better. And I think that we should do this before we jump off into the next world. We're gonna find out if the bond got voted no again, 'cause I see the numbers, you guys disagree with me. I see the numbers going right back up to where it was before. I certainly feel that a new school is possible over on the Robert Frost site. I checked Google to see what the grades are and I can see that it could possibly work cutting across the property and going in front of the Baptist church. So these are things that I think that need to be considered before we just go completely off and we're gonna say 32 million, 36 million, wherever it's gonna be, and people are gonna vote no. And I also feel that if we continue to have a plan that says that Schleter Campus is gonna be tore down, without, if people seeing what the whole proposals are, it's gonna, they're gonna vote no on it for that basis as well. So it really encourages us to be looking at, how can we do, how can we solve it? I wanna meet with this gal that talked and talk with her about things. So I think this is, this is certainly something that we need to do. One other concern I have is we're hiring, this is another thing that I believe the older members of the committee, the permanent members frown on, it was being advertised now, or at least I understand it's going to be that you're gonna hire a project manager. Well, we don't even know what the project manager's going to manage. So we're gonna spend tens of thousands of dollars again, where we could probably work with companies like Dalky and get some figures that would tell us about where we are. I understand there's some kind of numbers you're looking at tonight with the modular things. So I think that'd be a less expensive route where people come to volunteer and give you their thoughts. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, questions? Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Donna Becker, 1247 South Water in Silverton. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the field that we don't use and the street that's closed during the day. Because my room is right next to that street and my students nonstop, more than at least 20 times a day, "Hey, there's another car. They're not supposed to be there." They notice when people get pulled over on the street. We went to use the field this morning. As we are crossing the street, there are cars trying to use it. Not even in there five minutes, two more cars were using it. So really, we can't safely use that street and that's why we don't. And I don't really see how it's possible to use it safely, letting kids just go over there without someone standing in the crosswalk because they don't go slow.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Why don't you?
It's a second time up. Hi there, my name's Robert Hitch. As a lot of you know, I've been here my whole life. Up until a year ago, I moved to Scotts Mills. However, I am the crosswalk guard of Eugene Field School, five days a week. I don't have a student in that school anymore. I've moved to Scotts Mills. My student goes to Scotts Mills, my others, one's about to graduate high school, the other's graduated high school. And the first year that I was there, my kid was there and I volunteered. And the danger that I experienced as a crosswalk guard is why I drive from Scotts Mills every morning to make sure those kids get safe across the street. I have gone as far as swinging my flag at people that can't see me in my orange vest and my orange Beavers hat. Anyway. If you, if, if you can't see that, I mean, seriously, these people are not stopping. I make my students, one of my rules in the morning is they cannot leave the curve until I'm in the street with the cars completely stopped, because I've almost been hit so many times that I do not want my children following me out into that road. I mean, it's that bad, guys. I see it every day, five days a week, two years. And I've heard a comment made that, "Well, you know, that building's been there 94-some years and nothing's ever happened." Well, you're right. When I went to school there, this town was under 3,000 people. I went out and drove past the population sign today. Does anybody happen to know what it is now? Almost 10,000 people. That's a lot of traffic. To the point, I have to pile up kids just to regulate and keep traffic flowing. It's a dangerous thing, guys. The other problem I see, kind of addressed the others, one is that street. We are having cars rip down that street while kids are getting off the school bus. And they're not driving slow. I have yelled at them. I have, we've had them call people when, you know, if it's a kid that, we happen to know who it is, we contact them and let them know. Nothing does any good. We've put flashing red lights on the signs. We even talked to the school buses recently to say, "Hey, can you just leave all your lights on while you're in there? Put the stop signs out." I talked to the police, asked them to police it more, and just nothing seems to get done about it. And it's dangerous. I mean, people literally just come ripping right through there. The one other thing I wanted to address was, yes, the electricity, okay? I've lived here all my life. I love that school. It's like part of Silverton. But sentimental or not, when you add a coffee pot to the office and blow out half the hallway, the library, and the whole entire office, including the principal's office, I don't have to be electrician to say, "Fire." We have way more stuff running on electricity in that school and I've seen the spider webs of electrical duct tape to the ground. For 30 years, we've, that I know of, we've talked about doing something about this school. We're still talking about it. Our kids are not safe in that school. You're right. Maybe I can't just sit up here and read off a bunch of solutions. But on the same token, when are we gonna, who's gonna be the board? We come as a community and a board both and make it safe for our kids? Or are we gonna do this for another 30 years? I've heard about it to my whole life until I'm, I'm sick of the subject. But now I've worked in it. Yes?
One minute.
Now I've worked in it and I was about finished. Now you're burning up my minute. Thank you. And I've got to the point that, we need to make this safe for our kids. You guys make us proud. Be the board that, and be the community. Work together. Let's quit fighting about it. The fact of the matter is, our children are not safe in that school. And I've experienced that in the two years I've been in it. I mean, firsthand. I, I, I used to just push it off like everybody else, but it's a problem and I've seen it now. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Robert, and thank you for doing the crossing guard every day. I've seen you out there many times. Okay, we gotta keep moving along.
I wanna thank Robert for everything he does to keep our kids safe.
Could you give us your name and?
Chris Mitchell. I'm gonna sign in last. It always throws my red flags. And thank you, Tim. This is probably the most laughter I've ever heard in a board meeting. So, yeah, I can sit up here and we can talk about the problems of Eugene Field and how to get there and what the next plan is and what's the next step is. I'm just up here to ask that we maintain our timeline, that we have, we, we literally have a due date on this. And that, you know, the next work session is great and education is great and all of that is outstanding and it's due diligence and it's important. And we have to do that, but we still have a deadline and we must meet that. And we're here to help. We want to contribute. As, as a part of the parent group, I wanna be here to help and learn and educate myself in what it takes to get this going. And then the other thing I kinda wanna, I wanna express is that I'm not afraid of the bond failure. Of course, I wanna pass. Of course, I want our, our children to learn, but what did we learn last time? I've heard Andy talk a lot about what we learned from the last bond failure. Okay, here we are again. Will we be here next year having the same conversations about Eugene Field? I don't know, but I wanna try. I wanna try to get something out there. I wanna try to focus on Eugene Field. Yes, we have a lot of other issues within the district. Yes, those can be all, all be addressed in one wonderful bow. Doesn't always work that way. Eugene Field is our focus. We have a timeline. We have a due date. Let's meet it. Communication is key right now. Let us help you. Let us, how can we help you? Where can we help you? What can we do? What can we do to help, and each of you, any of you? If it takes going door-to-door, you've got my Saturdays, you've got my Sundays. I'll walk with you. I'll hand out flyers. We've got, you know, any and all information can be distributed. I'll hand out flyers, we've got, you know, any and all information can be distributed. What can we do to help you? Meet this due date for getting Eugene Field solved.
Thank you, Chris. Do you want, anyone else? Do you want to? Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying. Keep laughing.
Whatever, man. Hi, my name's Eric Repay. I live at 322 Edgewood. I think I bring a little bit of a unique perspective to this, because I grew up here. I was in Owen's class. I was one of Andy's first students when he started teaching here. But in '91, a little thing called Desert Storm started, and I left halfway through senior year to join the Army and spent the rest of my life trying to get back here. I've been back now for about, almost three years, and sadly, I'm egregiously undereducated on the topic of Eugene Field. But I've been trying to change that over the course of the last month or so. The reason I think I bring a different perspective to it is because I haven't been here for a lot of it, and I haven't had the adult experience in these conversations. So I represent somebody who has the love of the community that we all have, but also maybe some of the ignorance that some of the newer citizens to our town have, and things of that nature. And I just wanted to point out, I got here early so I could read the minutes from the last meeting, and one of the things that I saw was about the last bond being overly complicated. People apparently didn't know where all the money was going. And from my personal perspective, I just wanted to say that that is a huge thing. If you guys put a bond in front of me right now for $5 million and told me it was going to fix everything, and didn't tell me why or how, I would vote no. But if you put one for $100 million, and I could see where that money was going, and I knew it was the right things, I would vote yes. So I think that's huge, to make sure that the voters know exactly what it's being, what everything's being spent on. That's just from the perspective from somebody who has the love of the town, but is looking from the outside. I don't know all of the issues yet, I'm still educating. So I just kind of wanted to mention that, that that really, when I read that, that hit me, because that is huge, hugely important. And that's all I have for you today.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. And Eric, that is one thing we heard from the voters last time, and that's one thing we've really been working hard to do, is get more information out there.
Yeah, when I read that...
And that's one thing we will continue to do as we move forward.
That's a huge, huge thing. I know I'm stickler with my money unless I know where it's going.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Michael Gabe, and I am one of the doctors in town, and I had sent an email to the board, and just wanted briefly to talk about that. And I'm concerned primarily about the kids in Eugene Field School. I'd really like to see them out as soon as possible. There's a whole lot of people in the community that thank you for accepting the recommendation of the task force to close that school and to build one at the middle school. And I understand your concerns as well, that the middle school is a very good site, or the Schleter School site is a very good site for the middle school, and not that good for the little kids in Eugene Field. And what I would like to ask you to consider is to build your middle school at the Schleter site, and build it so that you can house temporarily the little kids from Eugene Field in that facility, so you can move them out of Eugene Field as quickly as possible. Plum it for little kids and for big kids. Put the little toilets in first, and the little sinks, and when you can move them out, put the big kids' sinks in. Put lockers in the hallways for the big kids when they get there. Put cubby holes in the classrooms for the little kids, take them out later. But get the kids out of Eugene Field School as soon as you can, and maybe house them there, and still get your middle school. I understand there's a lot of alternatives for grade schools and things, and I really don't, I don't really have any opinions for how to solve that. That's a tough one. And I'd also ask you to keep the size of the bond as low as you can, so we can get it passed. We need to get it passed. And I know there's a lot of needy projects that need to be done in the school district, and a lot of issues coming up as this bond is moving towards the fore. And we certainly hope that the bond that you put out there is one that we can get passed. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Stacy, did you want to? Okay.
Stacy Posgate, 924 Barger Street, Silverton. And I like being on that side much better than the southern side. So there's a couple of things, but primarily what I would ask the board to do in considering a bond is just really keep it simple. And by that, I'm not saying just have a simple linear move from Eugene Field over to Schleter. The leapfrogging, I don't have an issue with, and I think that might even be the best use of Schleter. So do something that makes economic sense for a long term, which is not necessarily the cheapest thing. What I mean by keep it simple is focus on getting those kids out of Eugene Field. A single, unitary focus. Get them out. I think for the most part, we all agree, it's dangerous, and something needs to be done. There's a few people in the community that say stay there, but I think for the most part, what you have heard is get them out. So focus on that particular message. One thing I want to point out, which I'm sure that the board is aware of, but just to remind you, with the second phase of the high school bond, so that it passed, first phase '94, second phase '98, $19,290 capital construction fund to finish the high school. But that also included upgrades for elementary and secondary schools. So it's Bethany, Central Hall, Evergreen, Monitor, plus some other safety and building requirements, some other building and safety improvements to the other schools. Didn't pass. So you tried it again, 2002, $31.25 million, or $250 million, again, finish the high school, plus add other improvements to the other schools, including potentially Eugene Field. Didn't pass again. So in 2006, you had another bond that did nothing but direct everybody's attention to, "Let's fix our most significant problem." And that is, we have a high school that doesn't make sense, we need to fix it, and there was nothing else in that bond, other than fix that second phase. So what I'm getting at is, I know it's important that there are all of these other issues that need to be fixed in the other schools, but I'm concerned, and I think that history tells us, that that might be a huge detriment to this bond. And I'm sure someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but if I understand it, there is some money sitting in the school district, but it's being reserved for that emergency that we're all waiting to happen at Eugene Field. So if we get a bond passed, and we can fix the inner schools, then doesn't that free up that money to go to these safety precautions? And then in addition, we can do another bond, as long as we keep it small and palatable, and you build a trust with the community so that they'll actually vote for it. It makes sense to do it. One of the other things I wanted to talk about, and it's something that came up at the past work session, is, well, do we have other options? Redistricting, for example. Are there other options out there? And I know that the thought behind that was, well, we need to still work on reunifying, or not reunifying, but unifying the school district. I would ask that the board consider, and this is something separate and apart from the board, you can do that, but you can do that by creating events and activities where people feel invited to join in on the rest of the district. And I think, for example, dodgeball's a great example. You've got all of the schools and all the parents of the entire school district coming together to participate in an activity. You can focus more on things that are more inclusive. You don't have to, for example, redistrict. So if that's also a concern, that's something you can take care of separate and apart from the bond. But for this bond, and assuming that it goes forward, my request is that you just focus on Eugene Field and the schools within our Silverton boundaries that would be smart and necessary to move those kids to the right place.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. She was up first. Go ahead. Then we'll give you...
Hi, my name is Burkita Reinhardt. I live in Brooks, Oregon. And I am nervous, so just be patient with me.
You're fine.
I am new to Silverton. I recently moved here and started working at Eugene Field. I am a certified teacher, but I am a classified employee. So I work with four different classrooms, ranging from two second-grade classrooms, a first-grade classroom, and a third-grade classroom. I also work as a playground aide, and so I've seen my fair share of the various classrooms and their settings, and their environment. And in one classroom in particular, there is a sink. It doesn't work half the time, or it's freezing cold water, or burning hot water. So it's not really able to be used. The technology, the cords, as many people have already stated, is an obstacle course. I've even tripped over them myself. The students sort of kind of figure out how to work their way around it, but it's a constant hazard. The bathrooms is another constant thing, that I go in there and I have to kind of round up kids, because teachers are teaching. Well, they're just a mess, or the toilets don't flush, and it is kind of disgusting, in my opinion. But another thing, too, is that when I first started working here, it reminded me of my elementary school, and the fact of the teachers are so wonderful and so great, but also the smell. I remember in my elementary, my elementary school, walking in, and there was a distinct odor, and it wasn't a pleasant one. And that's what I noticed when I first walked in here, is there is a smell, and it's not a pleasant one. I've kind of, I guess, adapted to it, but my allergies have tremendously increased from working here. My allergies have not been this bad before. I've done student teaching in different school districts, and I've taught in other areas, and they've never been this bad. So, and I've almost, in talking about the crosswalk, I have personally, myself, almost gotten hit multiple times. I have to park closer by subway and slowly kind of work my way over across the street in order to get into the building. I have talked to the police about it, because I almost got hit, and they said there's not a whole lot that they can do. They did some more patrols around, but there's nothing being done. And my biggest fear is a kid running out after their parent, or trying to just cross the street and getting hit. So that is a major problem for me. Again, with the windows open, that was also mentioned earlier, that was a surprise to me. I kind of, I kept on asking, "Why are the windows open when it's winter time?" And so they, a lot of people have said, "Because of air quality or ventilation." So that was news to me. And in one room down the hallway, I'll be burning up. I'll need a fan or something. And in another hallway, I am freezing cold. I don't have enough coats and layers on to keep balanced. So it's just, it's hard for students, in my opinion, to focus in either one of those environments, from my experience with working with those kids. So I do love the school in the sense of the teachers, and I understand the historical value of the school building itself, but that, I don't believe that that is a safe place for kids to learn at the quality and quantity that they should. So those are my opinions from being new here, and from, this is my first year as a teacher. But the teachers are wonderful. They accommodate all the students and try to do the best that they can with what they have. So I'm very impressed with what I've seen. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Carson Lord, and I'm hungsten of the time here, so I'll be brief. Just have three quick points to make. And the first is, I think that in all our talk about the bond, we've forgotten the timing that was involved with the last one, and I think all of us can remember, we were pretty deep into what turned out to be a very nasty recession. And fortunate for all of us, this past recession had one thing in common with all of them that have, the 12 or 13 that have come in our history before that, and that is that it ended. And if you need proof of that, you can drive just east of here and go out Pioneer and check out how many home starts we've had within the past six months. And that was kind of brought into focus with me today, as somebody was out doing some work at my place, and he had announced, he was my neighbor, lived just over the hill, and then he started talking about his kids, the three-year-old and the four-year-old. And it became pretty clear to me that those kids would soon be joining the multitudes here at Eugene Field. And so I think that we need to keep that in mind as we're moving forward, that time has changed, and that the financial picture for a lot of people has improved in the past few years. Second, I'd like to clear up one mistake, and that said, people have talked repeatedly about that there hasn't been an accident at Eugene Field, and I'm surprised nobody else was, has brought it up, but I can say that's not the truth. I witnessed an accident, a kid getting hit. He was my age at the time. I think we were up at Robert Frost, and we were crossing Water Street there from the front doors of Eugene Field. The school bus stopped, waved the kid in front of him, who happened to live across the street, and the second car in the second lane there did not stop. And so luckily, he was a taller kid, kind of rolled off the hood and knocked off the side-view mirror, and was not severely injured. But it certainly will not be the first time the kid is hit, the next time that it happens. So I wanted to clear that up. And then finally, I just wanted to thank all of you for all the work that you've done so far, and the legwork and time that you put in, and putting the task force together. I hope that as a community, we can all remember that you're volunteers, and you've been elected to make decisions for us, and that we really do appreciate all your service and the time. Hope you have the courage to stay the path here and avoid the drift. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carson. Anyone else?
My name is Jessica Vee. And I know it's already been said tonight, but I just want to reiterate that time is of the essence. I feel like it's really important that you develop a plan, and that you all get on the same page. I really appreciate the community's involvement with you all as a board. I've talked to some friends at different school districts, and sadly, it's not the same case. There's not as many community members sometimes who go to these meetings or get involved. But with that said, I feel like there comes a time when you need to develop the plan and go with it. We elected you as members to represent us, and it's time that you make some of those hard decisions. I equate a lot of what I say to having young children. My children like to play the mommy-daddy game right now, and I feel like that's sort of what happens sometimes with the community, that people keep coming at you with different ideas and different plans. And we could do that for years to come. We already have done it for the last 30 years. So I feel like it just, it just really, there just needs to be a plan. And once you have that plan, you're going to have the backing of myself and so many other people in this community. If I have to go door-to-door, if I'm up late at night, up early in the morning, I will do whatever it takes to help pass a bond, help support getting our kids in safe and healthy environments. So that's all I wanted to say, just to drive home that point and get it done. I also wanted to mention one other thing. I respect what Stacy said, and I agree a lot with what she said. I also am a little bit nervous, though, that if we just focus on Eugene Field, that we might find ourselves in the same spot years to come with Mark Twain. And so when you employ a project manager, or start looking at the different cost for how much it would be to fix some of these problems, it might be worth your time to put those dollar amounts up, talk to the community about it, see what would be a smart plan. If it's taken this much time to pass a bond, or to try to even get a bond passed for Eugene Field, it's hard to fathom how long it might take to fix the problems at our other schools. It would be really nice just to have it all taken... It would be really nice just to have it all taken care of and know that we can rest assured that our kids aren't going to face any of the problems and then move forward with some of the other issues with the other schools. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we also have an audience with visitors later in the meeting, but thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight, very good comments. Moving on to discussion items, Mark Twain property partition. We got a, an appraisal, the appraisal from the property in our packet. This is Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, I can chime in just, just a little bit to be certain that the public isn't thinking that we're selling the Mark Twain property. Mark Twain is about 15 or 17 acres, and there, there is approximately 3.3 acres on the north end of the Mark Twain property. It's a bit of a dogleg, and, and then it ultimately forms on the west side into a triangular shape. This has been a piece of property that's been considered in the past by this board for, for, for the sale, a transaction of some sort. And I think, and I think, I believe that it lends itself to, to the public input that you've received as a board, that you do a thorough job of assessing yours, your property to determine if there's any acreage that's available for potential sale for, and to identify uses of those dollars for specific purposes in, in the future. And, and you've heard from the public as well to designate those for facility improvements at, at all of your schools as necessary. And so based upon the appraisal that you've received, and with hypotheticals about partitioning 3.3 acres, there's potentially $400,000 plus in, in available value of that property there that in, in my recommendation is that it should be partitioned because I don't see it as a, as a future use for school purposes, which is the designation that you'd have to make before you can put it up for sale. So the purpose of this evening, Mr. Chair, is for, for the board, for you to begin this conversation in public, to say what's the merit of doing so, to evaluate that, and to take a little bit of time, but at the same, in the same breath, I would encourage you to give it serious consideration.
Yeah, this is something we've talked about a few meetings, or we've talked about it at different meetings off and on for a while, and to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. This is something that I don't see us ever using that property. It would be a good time to put it up for sale because we could tie it into the other triangle piece that a private party owns. It's almost $400,000 we could use for other projects, some of the maintenance issues around the districts and district and some things like that. So to me, it's a, it'd be a wise move. Any other discussion?
Well, Tim, is there any way that the public can access that delineation of that property so they know what we're talking about?
Yes, we can, we can put information on the website, or we can, we can make copies available, absolutely.
My biggest concern about the, the sale of property is who the neighbors are going to be, are they going to be good neighbor or not? I know we can't stipulate that, and that actually is a concern of mine. The property's really does have value, and we have needs in the district.
The multifamily.
Yeah, I have some concerns about it. Yeah, short-term, $400,000 is a lot of money, and the schools could definitely use it, and I'm not debating that part at all, and this is where I'm conflicted, is the idea of having apartment houses right there next to the school at the same time and not knowing what that's really going to look like and having, you know, is it, I just would be a little bit more concerned about that. And as a long-term, being a problem, so I'm a little hesitant on those money at the same time. I think our school district needs it, so I would like more input from the community on what they think about it.
There would, there would definitely be a, a short-term gain, but that, that piece of property in the grove is there. It's kind of one of those things that makes so much a little bit different. To me, it's a, it's a really wonderful green space in a part of town that doesn't have one. And it would be, I, I think that long-term, we would, we would regret selling that, you know, perhaps we don't need it, perhaps we can do a horse trade with the city or somehow, but preserve that as open green space. Part of, it's part of one of those things that people, as they're touring Silverton, I, I imagine people go by there and go, oh, that, look at this school, what a wonderful site, you know, whereas if it was gone and it was high-density housing, or who knows what would be there, I think it would just really take away from Mark Twain's appeal. So I would be very cautious, but, but $400,000 is a chunk of money.
Anything else? Andy, what's our timeline on this?
Whatever you determine. The adjacent property of about one and a half acres, which, which matches with the triangular boundary on the west end of this property, is currently for sale. And so even if that were sold for some reason without, without any connection to the school district, then, then it could potentially be a lost opportunity, but I, I don't know what the potential for that one and a half acres is, because it's a peculiar-shaped piece of property as well.
Andy, can we stipulate how the, how the piece of property to be used? With, we've talked, we've talked about high-density housing, but what type of high-density housing? Could be seniors, could be single level, can we, can we stipulate those type of things?
I, I don't have the, I don't have the answer to that, Wally. My, my sense is based upon experience that we've had with land sales in the past is that, is that there, there would be some limitations on that, but I, I'll check into that.
Did I see somewhere where the city had down medium density? Or have they, have they stipulated what that would be yet?
The city has given us indication that they, that there is, there's a deficit in, in the city of Silverton specific to multifamily housing, volume of property available. And so our understanding from the city is that they, that there would be interest in acquiring additional multifamily housing, medium-density housing for the purposes of, that we're discussing here. And so the word from the city is that they would be open-minded. Of that and another, we have to go through a process to change that zoning from its current designation as public, it's my understanding, to, to the multifamily housing designation, but it sounds like the city is receptive to that and is very interested in, in increasing its volume of property with that designation.
Okay. Anything else? Let's keep this in the back of our minds.
Yes.
Or in the front of our minds. We should probably make a decision on this, you know, in the next few months, I would think, just to decide what we're going to do with it. And just for information for the public, the piece of property we're talking about at Mark Twain is like between the soccer field and the railroad tracks. There's a triangle piece owned by a private party, it's about one and a half. The district also owns a triangle piece of about the same size, I think. But then we also, ours also kind of fans out into a square piece up the, at the, be the east, east side of that property. So, so it's about three acres total.
Tim, do we have any idea of how much of those, everyone, I think, probably pictures all those trees. If it were, if it were, if it were to be gone, how much of that grove would go with it?
Well, it's delineated right here.
It's here, but I mean for the public, just for a rough, you know. I mean, I, I've seen the map, but is there, I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't, I think the...
Maybe someone else had that on the top of their head.
The trees are mostly on the, like the one-acre triangle piece.
It looks like it'd be the edge of the soccer field.
Yeah, it's kind of the backside.
It's pretty much everything north of the soccer field.
Yeah.
When you add the other, the other triangle.
Just to give folks out there an idea.
And that, you know, that always, that depends on who buys it.
Yes.
You know, and what, what that person would leave and what they wouldn't choose not to, not to leave.
Correct, yeah.
Anything else on that one?
Probably, I don't know if it's helpful to anybody else, but it's helpful to the way I think about it, is I, in thinking about the alternatives, I tend to think, well, if I had $400,000 in our account and this property was for sale, would I advocate going out to buy it? And to me, that just flips the thing on its head, and I don't think anybody on this board would be probably advocating that we go out and spend $400,000 to buy the property. And so that being said, I mean, to me, again, just a different way to look at it, but it tells me that if we don't have a reuse for it, that $400,000 is a pretty expensive green space for the school district to be shouldering on behalf of the community. I think it is a nice thing, but I think it's an expensive, it's, it's too expensive, in my opinion, so I think I would be in favor of continuing to look at, at dividing the property and putting it for sale.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree.
That's also one thing we heard after the last bond election from the public, is to look at all our resources, and if there's property we're not going, don't see us using in the future to sell that and use that money for other purposes.
Right, yeah, I, I, Tim, I've heard it said that we're, we're the, we're the Parks and Recreation District for, for Silverton. And, you know, is, is, if we get rid of that, is, is Silverton losing a good chunk of a park, a good chunk of the green space? Is there a way to horse trade it, to trade it with Silverton for something, sell it to them, do, keep it, get, get the money out of it, but keep it as a park or something along with it? I don't know what city Silverton, would, would they say, oh, my gosh, we're, we didn't know that was, that was going to happen? You know? Would, would the public miss that? Is, you know, is there a way to get the value out of it and get rid of it, like was, get it off of our books, like what Owen's saying?
Probably the city wants money, too.
Everybody wants money.
Everybody wants money.
So anyway.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, moving along, June 16th Board Work Session. In our last work session, we had talked about the possibility or the need to have extra meetings, and we kind of designated next Monday night as, as a possibility. Andy has scheduled, and this can be changed if we decide not to do this, but he has scheduled me to have a presentation for us on volumetric construction, which is one very important thing I think we need to look at as far as we, as we move down the bond road. And also, was that, was Seattle Northwest also coming, or was that the next week?
We have them scheduled for the 23rd.
Okay, okay. So it was the volumetric construction and also, so we can keep working on a project manager, making a decision about a project manager. So I think it's, I think it's important that we, you know, we're going to have to throw some extra meetings in now and then.
This is going to have to be a key piece of what we're looking at for, for the overall scope, so I think it's important we meet and fully understand this.
Is everybody okay on the, next Monday, the 16th?
Yes.
I won't be here.
You won't be here? Erv, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's plan on it. And thanks for setting that up with the volumetric guys, Andy.
You're welcome.
That'll be, that'll be good. Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, Administrator and Staff Reports, Andy.
Thank you. I have three, three topics to briefly address. First of all, as I place in my memo to you that it's time of the year for my annual evaluation, and so I'll be providing a summary document to you prior to your June 23rd meeting, and we'll, we'll also be providing a bit of a different format to you as well, based upon input that I've received from each one of you, something that's a little bit more understandable, but specific to the standards expected of superintendents. I'll give you plenty of, give you plenty of opportunity to do that, and then my evaluation summary to the public will be at your, at your regular session in July. And we'll provide all that information to you. If you have any questions, please let me know. I, I want to, to let you know as well that we continue, we as a district, with, with your support, of course, continue to, to make gains in, in the district, district visioning, the year-long district visioning process. And I think it's also fair to say that we're, we're, we're very close to providing a full report to the board for, for your consideration. However, before I jump to that, the, the last meeting that we, we had with, with our visioning consultants, Jim Mabett and Jerry Colonna, was on May 27th, and we spent about four, four and a half hours with the administrative team, which was, again, was a very healthy meeting on many levels. But what we came out of that was the next step in providing you the documentation specific to the visioning process, and that is specific to some targeted goals for your consideration. The, the administrative team actually developed three very specific district-wide goals for your consideration, and we have scheduled the two consultants for, for the, the 23rd of June as well to come and give you an update on that, on the visioning process, with the intent that you'll have a option of taking action by the end of the summer or by early fall at the latest. So that's currently on, on the schedule. Just want to give you a quick update that we're, we're making great, great progress in that area, and I look forward to giving that information to you. And finally, the last topic is use of volumetric modular construction. We've, we've heard plenty of information from, from the public about your consideration of, of alternative options. You have given consideration to this option in the past. We have secured the services of Emmett Modular through a recommendation from MS Modular, a local business right here in Silverton, Alduer. And Stuart Emmens will be providing that report to you next Monday. Now, on the 16th, which I think will give you some, some very helpful information about the merit of use of this type of construction, 50-plus year of, of structure, 50 to 75-year structure, very, very typical to traditional stick-built construction, and knowing the scope, the likely scope of the work that you'll have at the Slater campus, where, where the removal of the oldest portion of that building, and you literally have a hole there between a single-story, very functional portions of that campus. Based upon the information that I've received to this point, and by the way, it's, it's not specific to all of the numbers just yet, but based upon the information I've received, I believe that it's going to be a viable option. I believe it's going to be an option that will give serious consideration to production at one of two sites within 20 or 25 minutes of this, of Silverton. There are many employees within those outfits which live in Silverton. I, I think some of the input that you've received from the public has been specific to local contractors and boosting the economy and giving a shot in the arm through the economy. And, and I think when you think in terms of a viable structure that will take care of the needs to provide a campus at the, at the Slater site for years to come, and, and as a potential windfall, will provide economic opportunities for local employees as well as something that I think we can be extremely proud of, but practical, I, I truly believe that this is a form of construction that needs to be given serious consideration. So I've asked Stuart Emmens to present to you next Monday to provide not anything specific to the Slater campus at this point, because we're still working on that scope, but I think he can give you the same kind of information that he's shared with me already that gives indication that this is really a viable option. So look forward to that.
Okay.
Hey, Andy, would he have any places that we can go look specifically? You know, if, if he could have that information for us, what would be the closest one that we could go? I, I remember we did this a couple of years ago, up to Battleground.
Battleground, right.
They, they didn't have, I think that they were using modular as a, as adding, not the main structure. But I believe up in Marysville, Washington, there was one. Is there something closer, by chance? If he could sniff that, I mean, I would, I'd be, I'd like to see it up firsthand, or I think some people would like to.
Yes, we can, he'll, he'll share that information with you, and full-blown construction of schools, I'm not certain that we have a, a specific site in Oregon, but I'm aware of at least two sites in Washington. But, but there are some local, local examples of, of volumetric construction, even as close as Jervis School District, where they found it to be an effective use. And so something, and I think you'd find that Jervis was very similar to Battleground, Tom, but nonetheless, it's, it's a potential option, but we'll get that for you.
Yeah, okay, great.
Questions for Andy?
I guess one quick question, kind of going backwards a little bit. We're going to do our June 16th session, talk about the volumetric construction, we're going to talk about the bonding in the following meeting. Do we need to reserve the 30th for any topic to keep this thing, these things moving?
You, you do, you do have an action plan to place a bond on the November ballot, and based upon what, what you've, what you've identified as the need for the next two meetings is you're keeping to that timeline. And that's, again, with a targeted August resolution, a consideration and approval for the bond to be placed on the November ballot. With that said, Wally, there's nothing wrong with reserving another day, that way you have it. I will let you know, too, and I, I mean, this may make a difference in your consideration, that, that we do, we have undergone and we are to the point of providing the intent-to-award program manager. We'll have that completed by the end of this week. You will have a recommendation for your meeting on the 16th, and once the program manager is on board, we're going to be in a much better position to be able to determine that scope and the objectives over the course of the next couple of weeks. So part of it will depend upon the availability of that program manager as well, but based upon the mandatory pre-submitting meeting that we had and, and the communication that we've had, is that the, all of the, those that submitted applications or responses to, to our request understand the accelerated timeline, the aggressive timeline that we have with the targeted date of an, of an August action on your part in order to place this on November ballot. So I share that with you in a little bit larger scope, Wally. I think it's a good idea if you do consider at least penciling in something... I think it's a good idea if you do consider at least penciling in something later on this month, but I, I don't know exactly what that would mean to me at this point.
And it may, may be early. I'm, I'm really anxious about trying to determine what, what the scope really will be. We, we definitely need some data out there to determine what that is, we understand some of the cost aspects of the various pieces of scope we've talked about and how, how much merit they have to put into a bond.
Maybe if we get a project manager on board, that can be one of our first discussions with him to see what kind of a timeline he needs to get some, get some cost figures, yeah.
Yeah.
The 30th might be too soon for that, but...
Right, it may be. And, and keep in mind that this is, this is a little different than, than I think what we've experienced in the past and maybe what some other communities have experienced. You've done a ton of work in acquiring figures over the course of the last year and a half and they're reliable figures. I, I don't have the expertise, we don't have the expertise on our staff to be able to put that package together so that we could submit it to the community for public input, but a program manager does. That's their job and that's why it's essential and timely that we bring them on board now so they can put that package together for you so you can make a decision by the middle of August.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for Andy? Scott, financial report.
Thank you. With your budget report that you received in your fourth packet, page one, you can see that we have a majority, almost 100% of our revenue has been collected, our budgeted revenue has been collected through May 31st, which is a good place to be. We still will receive some additional revenue in the month of June. We don't get a state school fund payment in June, but we will receive other payments such as federal grants, revenue from food services and the like. So, we will actually come in probably before the end of the year with more revenue than we had budgeted for. At this time in May, we still have, are, are kind of lagging behind in our expenditure somewhat, but please recall that in June is when, this is a cash basis report. So, in June is when we pay out the, the summer checks for teachers and other classified staff. So, that will be a big chunk of change coming out on the expenditure side. On the balance sheet, nothing very much different to talk about there, pretty traditional figures that you see there and it ties in with the very front sheet with the $15 million in cash that we have. And then when we turn back to page three, we've got the budgeted amounts not subject to carryover retention. You'll see that we have about 21% of that. Also, recall that the money mostly for teaching salaries and regular salaries will also come out of that very top portion of, of this particular report. And then the principals at their various schools have done a good job of, of, you know, staying underneath their allocation for their carryover money. So, we're in pretty good shape in that side as well. And then on the backside, you will see with the small print, you can see the, where our cash flow is for, through May. And we are, again, in a positive cash flow situation in the general fund. Our current year property taxes are kind of slowing down, they typically do in this month of June, but you'll see a little bit of a bump in the state school fund that is, we are, what's called the May adjustment. Because we're a slightly growing district, our May adjustment was to the positive, which was very helpful for us. We budgeted for some and it came in about $200,000 higher.
Okay.
So, in, overall, we have some pretty, you know, good, we're in pretty good financial shape. Do you have any questions on the financial report?
Okay, thank you, Scott.
I have one more thing. I just wanted to highlight to you, the, there is a draft resolution authorizing the issuance of individual procurement cards. In the, in our purchasing processes at the district, we use a traditional requisition and PO process. A lot of districts are now moving to procurement cards or purchasing cards. There are no costs to the district, but what they do is they increase financial controls, one big area for us, but it also reduces the amount of paperwork and increases our efficiencies. It allows especially a lot of those smaller purchases under $100 to go through preapproval and, and it allows them to go through in a lot faster way, allows people to purchase things on the internet. Yet the financial controls, because they're preloaded, we control that as to how much is loaded on a particular purchasing card. We would typically see one of these resolutions in your annual business procedures in July, but because we're already working on purchasing processes for next year and we're already starting to build requisitions for next year, I, I think that it was important to have this in front of you so you can see it before we put it on the consent agenda at some meeting in the future.
Okay.
Because we'd like to get this started in the district sometime in July.
Okay.
So, but if you have to read it and you have any questions about that, feel free to give me an email, I'll be happy to answer any of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Brett Davison, Evergreen.
We've had a great year. I think the staff is looking forward to a nice break, especially with the nice weather. Working really hard this year. If you take a look at the top there, our, our current enrollment, just for a few statistics, is 73. For next year, it's probably gonna be 76 and maybe 79. I talked to a family who is probably gonna move to town and, and are interested in coming to Evergreen, which is closer to our ideal, which is probably 80 to 85. At Evergreen, obviously, looking at the class combinations there, it's really important to keep a balance when you get to third through fifth grade and sixth through eighth. And so, getting, you know, 15 kindergarteners in to make up for it isn't possible because then you end up with 35, 40 kids when they get to third through fifth grade. So, just talking to people in the community and word of mouth and trying to, you know, fit some pieces together, so we're back up above 80 would be, would be good. Academically, it's just been really neat for me to see the teachers and staff hard at work with elementary school kids. They always have a different, a little bit different attitude than the high school kids that I see. You know, high schoolers are still excited, but just not quite as excited as fourth and fifth graders about going to school and just seeing the teachers do great things with them. If you want to see the, the test scores that are on the back from Oaks, and I think those speak for themselves about the, the quality and the high standards that people have out at Evergreen. The eighth grade class, we just did eighth grade promotion on Friday, and so I wanted to include a couple of things about some of the students that are there. One of the things is called the President's Award and it's made up of three things, the recommendation from the teachers at Evergreen and, which is, which is hard because you're only, you know, you run the gauntlet with four teachers, so you've got to make sure, and you have some of them for multiple years. So, getting a teacher's recommendation for this encompasses all those grades, that they exceed on the Oaks in either reading or math, not just meet, and then they have a 4.0 GPA. And four out of the eight eighth graders this year got that award. One of them missed it by one point on the Oaks test and a couple others were pretty close. And it's a good thing for them to shoot for and then also gives our, our middle school teacher something to kind of hold out there, especially to the eighth graders to finish strong, that they have to get his recommendation and they need to finish with a four-point to the very end. And then also, I, I thought this was interesting and from what, talking to them, this is fairly unique, three out of the eight are in student government going in as freshmen, two class representatives, Jordan Straylo and Rachel Peters, and then, and Riley Teeny as class president. So, she's adding a few people to her class. She's going from a class of eight to around 300 and she's confident enough and not intimidated to be, you know, their class president. And I think that speaks very highly of her and I know she's pretty excited about that. One thing that's been really different at Evergreen this year has been a big change is having a PE teacher and that's been a positive thing for, you know, physical activity and also getting it to a higher standard. Because I know with a classroom teacher, when they have to do every subject and then they have PE, the temptation, and it's understandable, is to kind of put that low on their priority list. And so, having a certified PE teacher who raises that bar and pushes the kids is, is a really good thing. And Evergreen's probably gonna work with Victor Point again next year, a combination, and try to get the PE teacher to be there for three days a week just to get a little bit more consistency at Evergreen for the kids and for the staff. I think it's just better for, for both. And then the other big thing, the talk of spring at all levels, I think, was the new test coming next year and the practice run through that. And so, we had some training by Peter Bellamy, but then also went through a practice round and I think that lowered the anxiety for the staff because they realized if they just keep doing a good job and hold them to a high standard, then they're gonna do fine on this test. And, and also realizing that everybody is in the same boat and if our kids are already doing well, they're gonna do just as good as anybody else or better when the new test comes around. So, that's been, that was, that was a good process to go through. And then also, it's not on your handout, but I would just like to formally recognize Patty Potter, who is our third through fifth grade teacher out at Evergreen. She just, or is completing her 40th year.
Wow.
And that's, 40 years of teaching is one thing, but she's been at Evergreen for 40 years.
Wow.
Doing multiple grades, being the secretary, answering the door, answering the phone, being principal part-time, she's done everything in her career and she's done it really, really well. And it's, it's been a lot of fun and a pleasure to watch her work and I think, well, the district recognized her a few weeks ago, but if you see her, make sure to congratulate her because that's quite a feat. Her and Jim Bruckner were both 40 years this year. So, it, it's something to be commended, that kind of service. So, that's it for Evergreen. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Okay, thanks Brett. Have a good last week. Dandy, Mark Twain.
Well, Mark Twain just completed eighth grade promotion on Friday night. We had 156 eighth graders that will be moving on to the high school next year. I think perhaps the highlight of the entire evening was the promotion party where we, again, had the 40 by 100-foot slip and slide. And I think we had probably almost as many parents and staff members participating as we did eighth graders. And it's kind of a neat partnership. The fire department comes out and uses their fire trucks and their water tanker to run the slip and slide and they're now using it for training hours for their men because they don't get a lot of opportunities to use that, the equipment. So, they have all sorts of toys that they put out there and so it has really developed into a fun partnership and evening for everybody in Mark Twain. We had a total of six students placed first, second, and third, both seventh and eighth grade awards for the Silverton Art Association Teen Show. So, I think that's a strong testament to Mrs. Chandler and the program that she's running in terms of art and the creativity that goes on with our students. We had science fair students present their projects to Rotary, Toastmasters, and Alliance Club. We had 40 students from Mark Twain at the Intel Regional Science Fair in February. 18 students representing 13 projects went on to the state fair and they received several awards. That's up from last year where we only had about five students go to the state fair and none of them placed. So, in, within a couple of years, Mr. Jamsa has really taught the students the scientific research and the important components that they're looking for in that state competition. In April, we took 156 eighth graders to a community service project during an early release Monday. We partnered with Oregon Gardens, Silver Falls State Park, and Victor Point Farms. Several of those organizations had come into the building throughout the school year presenting math lessons and science lessons in relation to farming, gardening, horticulture care, that kind of thing. And so, as a thank you for them bringing their expertise in, we took our workforce out to help them get ready for spring events. And, again, we fed everybody and it's really established into a nice community partnership with those three organizations. At the end of May, we selected a group of 12 students identified as most improved and the criteria for that was increasing Oak scores. They didn't necessarily have to meet, but showed tremendous growth. They had also had to show an improvement in attendance from their seventh grade year to their eighth grade year and then in general, an improvement in their overall coursework. So, those 12 students that were selected were sponsored by the Piddick Mansion Foundation. They received a tour of the, of the foundation and the mansion. They hosted a lunch for us and then the University of Pacific gave us a guided tour of a campus. None of these 12 students had ever been to a college campus before, so the idea is to help them create that vision of what it could be, why what they're doing now is important for four years down the road. In terms of hires, we've had several people retiring, so we're looking at replacing our basic skills. I have a language arts, social studies position posted right now. I just learned today that we have an assistant who'll be moving on to the high school, so we'll have to replace her. And then based on staff survey information and what their priorities are in terms of the coming year and the supports that they would like to have, and as I presented to the budget committee, we'll be hiring, or we did hire a .5 TOSA who's in charge of student management, behavior, and discipline. He'll be helping me with that so that that will free up some time so that I can be into the classroom more and working with PLC teams more on their common core standards and how to implement those kinds of teaching practices that we're seeing, that are being successful with our kids. We received a robotics grant in September to the tune of $2,500. We are applying for round two, hoping to sponsor two teams at a total of $4,000. We are fairly confident that we'll receive that grant because of the first-time success we had. They're really focusing on continuing the support of existing teams. And we had about 15 students who participated in the first team, so we're anticipating that that will grow, we're hoping to 30. We have some preliminary Oaks information. I do not have subgroup, subgroup growth information at this time. That'll be more available in the fall, which is something that we are very focused on and anxious to receive because that was the one area that we were marked low in according to the state report card. But overall, you can see that our growth over the last three years is remaining consistent in terms of we are making gains. What I've done is I've highlighted in the same color, trying to emphasize same-class test scores. So, for instance, the seventh graders of last year, you'll see that they're, they had a 51% in, in meeting math. This year, it's a 67%. What we're most excited about is the major increase we had in this year's seventh grade math scores. 71% of our kids met the benchmark. And so, that is a huge increase. In the last few years, we've been around in the 50, 55 percentile. And I think that when we get to subgroup information, that there will be some exciting information for staff there. Any questions?
Questions for Dandy?
Dandy, I had one, not, not related to this, but we talked about the property at the north end of campus.
Uh-huh.
What are your thoughts about that going into multifamily housing?
Well, I think a portion of Mark Twain is already surrounded by multifamily housing, so, because there's the duplexes and there's several apartment complexes kind of down the road as you're going towards the old Redmond facility. I think that, you know, working with whatever developer's gonna come in there, if this is what happens in the city, to establish a natural, you know, some kind of boundary, a very significant boundary, fencing or, you know, whatever that looks like. We have a lot of traffic that comes through there from people just wandering from one side of the campus to the next. I don't think that it's necessarily going to be something that's detrimental to the area.
Okay. Okay. I was just curious how you felt.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's all sorts of things that we could do to be proactive to create those boundaries and kind of secure the, the grounds a little bit more. I mean, you guys know what Mark Twain looks like trying to secure that place with those big open fields is...
Yeah.
Good luck to you, so...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dandy. Okay, any board reports tonight? Nothing? I just want, and I should have said this after the consent agenda, but I just wanted to say we had a really good bargaining session, again, with the Silver Falls Education Association, the teachers, and it was very successful. It didn't take very long and good, I just want to really appreciate the good relationship we have with that group, so... Anything else? Okay, correspondence? Had a few emails. A few? A few today.
A few today. Okay, our second audience visitors. Anything on discussion and action items or the budget? Yes, Barb?
Things that you talked about tonight?
Yes.
My name is Barb Rivley, and I live at forty-one fifty-one Delightful Lane, and I'll put that on there. And we just, okay. First, I just want to say that I've been blessed this year. I have a child at Robert Frost and a child at Mark Twain, and I got to go to four music programs. And I want to thank you for keeping that in the budget because, and then also having it at the high school. I don't know if I need to thank Mark for that because it was really neat to see your child perform in that wonderful auditorium at the high school. And I don't know if the rural schools do that, but I would encourage them to have their music programs there too because, again.
Some of them do.
Yeah, okay. Because it was, it was fantastic. So again, thank you for keeping that in the budget. I just want to give you my two cents about that triangle piece at Mark Twain, that yes, I think you should sell it. And some of you probably are aware, and some of you maybe not be aware, but the city of Silverton is trying to create a Parks and Rec department. And I'm looking specifically at you, Tom. So I wouldn't, only because I wouldn't, I would invite the school board to let the city find the green spaces. Let them be responsible for that.
Yeah, it's just a wonderful one there, and I hate to just see it get away.
Yeah.
Without possibly allowing something like you're describing.
I get it. Yeah, yeah. And I know that that's part of their task, at least the committee's task right now, is to secure green spaces in the community. The other thing that I wanted to propose to you guys is I would really like to see an electronic meal system in the Silver Falls School District. And if you don't know what I mean, what I mean is, right now, currently, when my son or daughter is almost out of funds for their lunches, or out of funds for their lunches, I have to run down and bring them a check. And I come from a school district where we had the automatic online where it would, I could set up reminders when my, when their accounts were at a point that I designated, say like five dollars left in the account, and all I could do was, all I did was go online, and I would put in my debit card or my credit card and, or even my checking account, and that's how I would increase their lunch money. And again, I just think you guys should at some point look into that because I don't think the costs are too high, and I think it would simplify a lot of people's lives, especially the secretaries of the school. And then last and not least, I would just like to know who my school board rep is. Is there, who, because you guys are all zoned, right?
Yeah.
So I live at forty-one fifty-one Delightful Lane, which is right off of Qual Road. So who would be my specific school board rep?
Off of Qual? Is that me or is that?
Yeah, I'm not certain. I have to look at the map, Barb. There is a map on the website with the board zones on it.
Okay, so I can look there? And it says who, what board member is for each zone?
Click on board, and it will tell you. You'll see color.
I have to look at two places. There's a map that says what, there's a map of the district showing where those zones are. There'll be another page saying what board member represents which zone.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And it's important to note though, Barb, that even though we have representative zones, the entire district votes for each zone. Okay? So you have a representative for your district, but the entire district votes for any vacancy of any zone that we have.
Oh, so I don't vote for a particular, like I wouldn't vote for ERV if I had to vote for ERV.
Correct.
Lucky you. Okay, okay.
You vote for every, you vote for every vacancy.
Okay, okay.
We run by zone, but everybody votes for every zone.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Anyone else? Yeah.
Eric. My name is still Eric, and I haven't moved since the beginning of the meeting. I want to touch on a couple of more things. To go back to the Eugene Field issues, I've heard everybody coming up here and they're talking about all of the different issues, and there's this and there's this, and there's the streets, and there's the electricity. The fact of the matter is that all of those issues don't matter if one of them exists. So if there's one issue that can't be fixed, none of those other issues even matter. We don't need to go through the list because it needs to be fixed. If it can't be, it needs to be replaced. That's all there is to it. So going through the lists is great to show you guys what we, that we know about it and we care about it, but it's really not, it doesn't need to happen because as long as you know that we know there's one that can't be fixed, replace it. And then something that I used to enjoy doing with Andy back in high school, is I'm going to disagree with him a little bit, and I think you call it the value metrics, is that what you were calling it? I am a journeyman carpenter. I spent eight years in Washington doing commercial construction. And I hate to tell you that it really doesn't save as much money as they're going to tell you it does because of all the extra work that has to be done to repair the shoddy work that most of those places do. I put up buildings with that, and basically what you have to think of it as a picture on cardboard, and you're holding it in your hands, or a puzzle that you're holding in your hands. And the volumetrics is a puzzle, and it's just not as, it's not going to hold up. The quality of the work is typically garbage, and I don't know the companies that you're talking about, and these were up in Washington, and we referred to it as scab work because we were unions and they weren't, and it was a way for them to save a lot of money, and we always got picketed when we were putting up their work, even though we were union, we were putting up work that wasn't done. I don't know what the rules are in Oregon, so. But I just wanted to point that out. Something you really need to look at is that it could end up biting you. You save a little money now, and it could bite you in the long run because the people actually installing the panels have to rebuild them, or you're just not getting the quality of work that you get from someone who's building it on site. And then on the, I agree with Tom on the property in Mark Twain, that if it can somehow be kept green, I understand it can't always, but it should, I would love to see it kept that way because having been gone, like I mentioned before, for so long, when I came back, it was a complete shock. The fields that I used to walk through are now Safeways and communities of houses, and everywhere that I used to go and do anything has now got houses on it. And all of that creates more traffic, it creates just more problems. So anytime we take our green property away and we turn it into any kind of housing, it, I understand that there is a level of growth that has to happen in any community, in any society, but the level of growth here over that short time that I was gone was insane. It more than doubled just in the time that I was gone, the population, and I hate seeing all our farmland disappear and everything else. I just wanted to throw that in there, that it really is, it sounds like a no-brainer for that money, but that maybe there's a possibility to sell that property to the city at half of its value with the understanding that they're going to make it a park. That way you get money, the maintenance fees go away, the school district no longer is responsible for maintaining it, so they're saving money. But you're taking a little bit less of a, less of a profit on that property in order to maintain that barrier between the public. It's just something to think about, so. And I think that's it. Again, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Dean?
Good evening. So anyway, let's talk about Mark Twain for a second. We've had some discussions in regards, obviously, to that property. I heard some comments tonight which, I don't, I'm not going to say it surprised me, but it's concerning to me in regards to, I guess, maybe worrying about who your neighbors could be, and if, is there a way of doing restrictions if you sold that property to somebody? I can tell you from a real estate aspect, if you want to devalue your property, then just put as many restrictions on it as you can, and you'll get a dime on the dollar at the end of the day. If that doesn't matter, then that's probably a good way to control that. I will tell you right now that the city has designated the top eastern portion of that property upon transfer to anybody that is designated to be multifamily median zone. That's in the comp plan, okay?
What does that mean?
What that means is that that property is sold, ever sold, it goes outside the city, outside the school district ownership.
What does medium mean?
Medium, that, it's multifamily medium is, is a designation for twenty, ten to twenty units per acre.
Okay.
Okay. So half that property, regardless, if you ever sell it, you don't even, you couldn't even do it unless they wanted to change the comp plan, I believe, and Owen, you can jump in here, feel free to, in regards to that, but you may not, you may not have a choice. You'd have to, maybe the city would have to change potentially even their comp plan to even allow that to happen. Okay? There's a reason the city has designated that property in their comp plan as multifamily for the future. They designated that because there's a need for it. And that's the only reason they do it. You go into many communities around many schools, and you will see multifamily housing. And there's a reason for that. And if they didn't allow, other cities wouldn't allow it either if they had, if they have similar concerns about who your neighbor is going to be. So please keep that, please keep that in mind. If you're worried about your neighbors, what this school board needs to consider is not selling property, you need to consider acquiring property up on the north side because you have an acre and a half that's on the market right now, a zone light industrial, and you have no control of what's going to go in there. Right across the tracks, you have Redmond Homes for sale. So if you're worried about who your neighbor is going to be, you need to be buying some of these properties if that's in fact really what's driving those comments because you don't have any control over that situation. So, you know, you may just want to keep, you may want to keep that in mind, you know, when you start talking about, about, your highest and best use for that is exactly, exactly what the city wants to see go there, and quite frankly, that's probably what should go there. And in regards to losing green space, we've got, the city has zero money. The school district is rich compared to the city when it comes to money. Okay, I'll tell you that. They've got eighty acres of the Pettit Lake that they have grandiose ideas about, and they have no money, and they've talked about selling that. So we've got plenty of potential green space in the city. The city has to figure out how they're going to buy it. I'll guarantee you, they will never come close to ever giving you close to the value for green space that you will ever get from a private party with multifamily designation on the zoning. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me because I've had a lot of conversations with the city.
Any questions for Dean? Okay, thanks.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to officially close our budget hearing, and we have one action item tonight, approved resolution adopting budget, levying taxes, and making appropriations for fiscal year 2013-14. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, everyone.